Can I have a motion to call the reorganizational meeting to order?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Sandy, it should be coming up.
It's up. There's motion. But it doesn't, it doesn't say if I can say yes or no.
It should give you the option of I, opposed, abstain, nothing?
No. Are you getting a pop-up box? Nope, I have a pop-up box with your name on it.
All right, so you're, you're like, you're logged in like a public instead of a board member.
Right, so Sandy, on the tab where you have Board Docs, you should be able to go up to the top and click and, and sign out and back in. And just make sure you sign in with your name that Victoria gave you and the password. And then you'll, you'll be in as opposed to viewing it like the public does.
So when you go out, you'll see, you'll see a little, there's a little man on the top, a little icon of a man. You'll click on that, you'll authenticate, come back in.
Okay, hold on. Give me one sec. Oh, I just saw it pop up somewhere. Give me a second, okay, got it. I, all right, so I got that.
Okay, well, great, that's unanimous, thank you.
Okay. Can we stand for the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice. Thank you. Okay, so we're going to move into the election of officers. Can I have them, and we're just going to go really slow with this one. Can I have a motion to nominate a candidate for president of the Board of Ed- of Board of Education?
Yeah, I would like to nominate Brian DeSessa. I think he's done a great job of being someone who everyone on the board can talk to over the last year. He's also been a very creative thinker in terms of problem solving. So I think he would do great as the board president. I, it's been an honor to do this over the last year. And when I started it, I kind of was taking the thought that, you know, a lot of other school districts have board members and board president, board presidents, do this for a really long time, 10, 15 years. And so, you know, when I started, I kind of figured, oh, assuming everything goes well, I would love to take this on and, you know, keep going with it. Unfortunately, with the pandemic, I, you know, have to work from home and take care of my kids. So I just don't have the bandwidth to be the president anymore. And so I think Brian would be a wonderful president of the board. And, you know, if the board would like, I am willing to step up and be vice president so that we can continue that institutional knowledge. But I nominate him as president.
I'll second it.
Is that with Susan?
Yes.
Thank you. Before we vote, I'm going to ask, are there any other nominations for president? No other nominations? Okay, there being no other names put forth, we're gonna, I'm going to open this up to vote for, for Brian. Hold on, please. Okay, it should be open for vote. Sandy, did you get the pop-up?
It just popped up. See, that wasn't so bad. I, Sandy, you're right in the groove. I don't know about that, but. Thanks.
Okay, so there are four yes and three opposed. Sandy Kruhl opposed, Chris Tice opposed, Yorgos opposed. Motion carried. So I will turn over the meeting to Brian. And Brian, if you want to look in under the executive content, you can see how to proceed. And if not, I can help you. So you would ask for any nominations for vice president?
Sorry, Victoria, does he have to take his oath first?
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry, you're right, yes. So how it's going to work tonight is the president and the vice president will take the oath. And then they'll come into the office to sign the oath. So Brian, let me get to that. Are you ready, Brian? You're ready to take the oath?
Yes.
Okay, so just repeat after me, raise your right hand. I, Brian DeSessa.
I, Brian DeSessa.
Do solemnly swear that.
Do solemnly swear that.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of.
The duties of.
The president of the Sag Harbor Union Free School Board.
The president of the Sag Harbor Union Free School Board.
To the best of my abilities.
The best of my abilities.
For the 2020-2021 school year.
For the 2020-21 school year.
Okay, thank you.
Congrats, Brian.
Congrats.
Thank you. Thank you. Looking forward to working with everyone again this year. And Sandy, you as well, you this year with.
Thank you, me too.
New, old person coming back. Looking forward. And so now we're going to move to 3.3, Victoria, correct?
Yes, sir.
Hi, this is Alex, and I would like to nominate Jordana Sobey as vice president. Jordana has been, done a phenomenal job, in my opinion, as a board president. I've been honored to serve as vice president for the last year, but I think the district would be best served having Jordana in that role. And I would like to nominate her as vice president.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Susan Schaefer seconds. Okay. And then Brian just asked if there's anyone else nominated?
Are there any other nominations for vice president or any motion someone would like to make? Okay, seeing or hearing nobody, I would ask you to open the vote, Victoria?
Yep. One second. Okay, it's coming open. Okay, thank you, that is for three. I have Sandy Kruhl, Chris Tice, and Yorgos Taviris opposed. Motion passed.
Okay, thank you. Congratulations, Victoria, if you could give Jordana the oath?
Yes. Jordana, repeat after me.
Okay.
I, Jordana Sobey.
I, Jordana Sobey.
Do solemnly swear that.
Do solemnly swear that.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of.
The duties of.
Vice president of the Sag Harbor Union Free School Board.
Vice president of the Sag Harbor Union Free School Board.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
For the school year 2020-2021.
For the school year 2020-2021.
Great, congratulations.
Thank you, and I also want to just take the time to thank Alex for being a great vice president this year. He's really been instrumental over the course of the last year. And I'm, you know, I'm sure even not in this role, he will continue to be instrumental on the school board coming here.
Congratulations, Jordana.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to public input. Is there any public input or are there any emails or correspondence received from the public to the district?
Yes, Brian, there was. There was one email from Leah Oppenheimer. Would you like me to read it?
If you could, please, yes.
Sure thing. So Leah emailed the board and asked that I read, or that the board read this text during public input. "My primary concern is the impact of COVID policies on our local community of white mothers and mothers of color, African-American and Latino, who are now unemployed or underemployed due to the need to remain at home and care for and/or teach their children. These women, many of whom are in service sectors, do not have the work-at-home option. Some of the Latino families are not yet citizens and are ineligible for benefits such as unemployment. That there is economic hardship for a significant sector of our school population is demonstrated by the number of school lunches distributed during the COVID closure. As the special federal unemployment funds run out, families suffering now will be joined by still more parents in difficult financial straits. As you enter this intense period of planning for opening, all sectors of our school population must be included in the process. School officials need to actively seek out and hear the opinions and ideas of all our concerned school constituents. How you recruit parents and allies for this process must also be transparent with grassroots engagement and participation. It is a democratic necessity in crises like these to hear directly from our mothers, who, as the New York Times has repeatedly noted, will suffer the greatest losses of wages and opportunities. Not to do so, even though it might pose operational difficulties for the school board, staff, and educators, is to forego fairness and miss opportunities for equitable and innovative community solutions."
Anybody else that's logged in or part of the meeting that would like to participate in the comment? Okay. Moving down to 5.1, new agenda item. Jeff, superintendent's report?
Sure. Good evening, everyone. I, I just wanted to update you on two separate issues. The first issue is where we're at with the planning for the possible reopening of school. There's been some news in the last 24, 48 hours. The governor stated yesterday, quote, "There has been no decision yet as to whether or not we are reopening schools. We obviously very much would like to." He went on to state that he's going to let science dictate or greatly influence what the decision is. There have been four regional task force meetings that began on June 15th. And basically, those task force meetings were broken into geographic areas in New York State. Nassau and Suffolk County was the last of those meetings, which took place on June 24th. And the tentative plan is to have guidance released on. Right now, in terms of how the world has approached this, there are certain countries that have reopened their schools. And I can point to Austria, Denmark, and Germany as three that have done so without a significant uptick in cases. Conversely, there are other countries such as South Korea and Beijing that did reopen their schools and quickly had to reclose many of them because of a significant uptick in cases. So it's a pretty cloudy picture out there in terms of what the future holds. Dr. Fauci, with, with, the federal government has said that much of it will be determined by the local conditions where the school is located in terms of infection rates and transmissibility rates and those kinds of things. In preparation for the planning, we have established a task force, and that task force has a meeting scheduled for Thursday of this week. And that task force is comprised of one parent from each of the three schools, one teacher from each of the three schools, seven administrators, three nurses, which are all our nurses in district, the heads of the very, the various bargaining units, in other words, the union presidents, and a board of education member. And that first meeting is scheduled for, again, Thursday, the 9th, at 6:30. It'll be the first of several meetings. The first meeting, I anticipate, will be a sharing of, you know, recent information, data out there, current status, those kinds of things. I do think in talking to many of my colleagues that a lot of the planning is going to be great, is going to be influenced by the guidance that comes down from the state. So although it makes sense to, to, on some level, hold our meeting after the guidance comes out, I do want to get started and maybe cover a couple of bases prior to that guidance being released. So that's pretty much the summary with regard to the planning and the first meeting. I do think at this point, there, and I've said this well over a month ago, there are basically three scenarios. And number one is that conditions are such that we can return to a full schedule, much like pre-COVID-19. Option number two is because of social distancing concerns, we have to have some type of schedule that's staggered, where we limit the number of people in a, in any of the buildings at a given time. What that looks like is yet to be determined. It could be that it's hourly, or it's daily, or it's weekly in terms of switch-offs. And the third option is, and I hope this isn't the case, but that transmissibility and infection rates go up, and we have to return to a fully remote scenario, in which case, I've also stated in the past that the remote learning would be more structured than it was last spring, where there would be a bell schedule and things like that. So again, the committee will touch upon all of the things I just talked about. But I, I do think those are likely the three scenarios that will be considered.
And Jeff, just for calendar-wise, when do you think, well, the, the committee will be pursuing all three of those options or discussing options so that, you know, we have a plan in place in the event of a last-minute decision by the state?
Yes. Did I hear that question correctly, Brian? Were you, was the question basically addressing whether or not we were addressing all three of those scenarios?
Correct, that, at the same time now, so that whatever the decision is and however late it comes, that we'll be prepared.
Correct.
Thank you, thank you for that update, that's helpful. And it, and I think you're smart to have a meeting to kind of set the stage beforehand. Just two questions. One is that it seems like the state's going to give their input, and then you're not going to have a lot of time before you have to submit something back to the state.
Right.
In between that time, I think it's helpful for the board to hear what the committee's recommended plan is, so that as a board, we have some level of input or participation in that. And secondly, I wanted to volunteer to be the board member on the committee. Or the, it's not a committee, the task force.
Okay, so there are two pieces to your, to your comment. The first is that with regard to when the plans are due to the state, there's a lot of consternation out there that the state is releasing their guidance on July 13th, and the state plan is due on July 15th. So I think that that's somewhat of a fluid situation. I anticipate that July 15th date will change, and that there'll be a lot of planning that happens between July 15th and ultimately when the plans are actually submitted. So I wanted to make you aware of that. And then the second piece of your comment was that you had volunteered to be the board representative. I had talked with the board president, now vice president, and had already settled on the board member to be on the committee, and had extended an invitation to Jordana. And I did that probably about a week ago, when I invited everybody else.
Okay.
This is Alex, I just, I think that Jordana would be a great choice for that. And I think we, we just, we ought to be careful. Obviously, everybody's concerned with what's going on here. But it's going to be enormous burden on the district and on this, you know, task force or committee already to sort of get these guidelines and then have to turn them around quickly. To then add a burden of having some sort of back and forth with the board during that, that, that doesn't sound like a great idea to me.
No, but I, there needs to be communication with the board, Alex. I don't, I don't think it needs to be a back and forth. But I think, and Jordana, you know, as the, that board member could keep the board up to date by email as to the happenings of that board, just so we're all informed of it. I don't think the proposition was to negotiate with the board, just as stream of information from that committee, maybe after the meeting on the 9th, Jordana, if you wouldn't mind just updating everybody with an email on the board to know where that goes.
Sure thing.
Thank you.
So the, the second thing that I wanted to talk about was the Sag Harbor Learning Center retaining wall. You're aware that we approved, or gave permission to Laser Industries to move forward with the construction of the wall. And I received a timeline today. And I'll just give you a brief overview of, of what the next roughly six to eight weeks look like. This week, they're marking out the utility, the utilities and dealing with survey issues. Next week, they're going to deal with removals of items that need to be removed and the concrete footings. And then the bulk of the work will happen from July 16th through August 29th, which is the installation of the wall, the drainage piping, and the backfilling. And then from the 29th to the 31st, just the last piece, which is just asphalt restoration, any damage to the asphalt, the fencing, and the cleaning and demobilization of the equipment, just taking everything out. So that's, that's the timeline, and they have us completed on August 31st.
And the contract's been signed, Jeff?
This is not necessarily a contract, it's a purchase order.
Got it.
It's a state-approved vendor.
Got it, okay. I just want to add, moving forward on any committees to the board president, that you just advised the other seven members, because possibly somebody would want to serve on a committee, just to put it out there for all of us to possibly engage in those types of things.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
That does it for my update. Are there any other questions?
Nope, good news.
Okay. Having no other questions, moving on to items 6.1 consent agenda, items for appointment. So I'd be looking for a motion for items 6.2, should be 6.22 through 6.5, correct, Victoria?
Yep. So moved. Second.
I have Chris Tice and Jordana, I believe. Okay, opening up. Alex? Thank you, that's unanimous.
Hey, moving on to item 7.1, district clerk, administration of the oath. Okay. So are you ready? I'm going to read, so I'm not going to be able to see you.
Go ahead.
Okay. State after me. I.
I.
Victoria Handy.
Victoria Handy.
Do solemnly swear that I will.
Sorry, sorry, go ahead.
Swear that I will support the Constitution.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York.
Of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York.
That I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the district clerk.
The duties of the district clerk.
Of the Sag Harbor Union Free School District Board, School Board.
Of the Sag Harbor Union Free School District School Board.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
Very much. Okay. Item consent agenda items 8.1 through 8.10. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Coming open. Okay, that's unanimous, thank you.
Items nine, consent agenda items for special education actions, items 9.1, 9.6. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I'm sorry, who seconded?
Susan.
Thank you. Coming open.
Hey, Brian? Go ahead, nope, go ahead, Victoria.
That's unanimous, thank you.
For the consent agenda, can we please approve 10.2 to 10.8? And then do 10.9 by itself, and then do all the rest, please? We're going to approve them all together as one?
I make the motion to remove 10.9 from the consent agenda to do it by itself. I'll second that for you.
Thank you.
Sandy, is there a second?
I second.
Ah, very good, okay. So I will, is there a motion to approve items 10.2 through 10.38, with the exclusion of 10.9?
So moved.
There a second?
Second. But did we need to vote on the exclusion first? We got a first motion and a second, but we didn't vote on the exclusion to remove it out before we voted on this?
No, the motion was.
The motion was to approve 10.2 through 10.38 with the exclusion of 10.9.
Okay. All right.
Okay, and then, I'm sorry, can you tell me who the, who motioned that and second? Because I was following the other one, too.
I motioned.
And I, Chris, second.
Okay, thank you. So I'm going to open that up now. And that is unanimous, thank you.
There a motion to approve 10.9?
So moved.
There a second?
Second.
Okay. Should be open. Okay, that is six, yes, and Susan Schaefer abstained.
And I just, I just like to say that I abstained because one of the institutions I'm employed by. Thank you.
That is correct.
You, section 11 on our agenda tonight, consent. Section 11 on our agenda, tonight consent agenda for the, for authorizations for items 11.2 through 11.8. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, that's unanimous. Thank you.
Section 12, consent agenda items for bonding of personnel. Is there a motion to approve items 12.2 through 12.7?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, that's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you. Section 13 of tonight's agenda, Board of Education Actions and Policies. Is there a motion for 13.1 to re-adopt all policies, administrative regulations, code of ethic, code of conduct in effect during the previous year?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
The only thing I would say is based on, you know, us going back to school and stuff, some of these might need to be updated or kind of suspended for certain things, but for the most part, they all apply.
Can I ask who seconded? I'm not sure if it was Sandy or Susan.
Susan.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there any other discussion?
Yeah, I just, I, I think that as a board, we're going to, just to build on what Jordana said, I think we're going to need to check in with our attorney and with NISPA to see if we know right now if there's any policies that we need to start to work on to adopt. So it'd be good just to have a process to do that between now and September.
Good idea. Thank you, Chris. Any other discussion?
Okay, that's unanimous. Thank you.
Section 14 of the agenda, Personnel Actions. Is there a motion on the consent agenda for 14.2 through 14.5?
I'm sorry, 14.15.
14.15, I'm sorry.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question before we vote?
Yes.
We have several very tenured staff members who have, are re, are retiring. And so I just didn't know if it would be at this meeting or at a following meeting where our administrators may want to make a few comments, as is customary.
Jeff, would you like to address that?
I don't think we had planned on comments, but I believe that looking at the senior staff members, Mr. Malone is, is on the meeting and I'm sure he'd be happy to say a few words.
Good evening, everyone. Ms. Nickle. Hi, everyone.
Hi, Matt.
Of course, it, you know, it would absolutely be my honor to say a few words, but, but I believe our practice has been to actually do a recognition sometimes later when we can make sure that the teachers or staff members could be present. I know they physically can't be, but I know they're not, they're not on the meeting. So we, we could do that maybe at the next available meeting and I'd be happy to coordinate that.
Great.
That makes sense. Thanks.
Thank you, Matt.
Yep.
That sounds great. And I also, I know, Matt, you had had Ms. Olson and, and Ms. Dohanos have their, I guess, retirement thoughts. They were in remote morning program. So it was heartbreaking for me, but lovely to see, see them directly let all of the students know that they were retiring. And I just, you know, thank them so much and on everyone else that's retiring as well.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea and we'll look to do that at our next available meeting when we can do that. Thanks for bringing that up, Chris.
It's open for vote.
I'm very fresh.
I don't see it yet.
Yeah.
You don't see it? All right, let me start it over. Hold on.
Thank you.
How's that? Perfect.
Got it.
Oh, that's unanimous. Thank you.
Action items. Is there a motion for 15.1 to approve authorization to sign health and welfare contracts?
So moved.
There a second?
Second.
Discussion.
Is, are you motioning for 15.1 through 15.5 or just 15.1, Brian?
Just 15.1, Sandy.
Okay, thank you.
Any discussion? Okay, open up the vote, please, Victoria.
Okay.
Thank you.
That's unanimous. Thank you.
Item 15.2 to approve common school district education contract. Is there a motion to approve 15.2?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Sorry, that's right. No, either one's fine.
Any discussion on 15.2? No discussion. Open up the vote, please.
Yeah, that's unanimous. Thank you.
Item 15.3 to approve Sag Harbor Custodians Association Memorandum of Agreement. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
For a second?
Second. Thank you.
Any discussion? No discussion. Can you open up the vote, Victoria?
Yep, there you go. That's unanimous. Thank you.
Agenda item 15.4 is to approve salary increases from memorandum of agreement employees. Is there a motion to approve 15.4?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? If there's no discussion, Victoria, open up the vote, please.
That's unanimous. Thank you.
Item 15.5 is approve Southampton Union Free School District Intermunicipal Agreement for Transportation Fleet Mechanic Services. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Okay. Any discussion?
I'm sorry, who, so who motioned first?
Susan Schaefer.
Susan and Jordana second. Got it.
And any discussion? No discussion. Please open up the vote, Victoria.
Waiting for your go. That's unanimous. Thank you.
Okay, it doesn't look like there is any 16.1. No additional items scheduled. We are up to public input.
Oh, hold on. I think we have items for just, oh, sorry, unfinished business. I want to just, let me just come back on. I, I was looking back where I missed it. I'm, I know we adopted the school calendar. I just want to point out that there is nothing for goal setting. There is nothing for the retreat, although it is in the Sunday emails. And there are no budget meetings on the calendar. So I think that probably is going to need to be revised to add some for that, especially this year coming up. Yes, I just, I, I was looking through my papers. I, I must've went through it and didn't have it during discussion.
The retreat, the budget meeting, then the calendar?
And the budget, for the budget workshops. I mean, I, what I feel I've seen over the last several years, where I think with, you know, as was said in goals, I would just like to see a little bit-
To start the budget process earlier.
And to have meetings that are designated just for that, not making people wait, you know, 45 minutes to start a meeting, but to have a real budget meeting. So, yeah.
Okay.
Brian, I would also, this is Chris. Thanks. I would also request that the goal setting and the board retreat, particularly the board retreat, perhaps can be a discussion of the board and what they think would be the best use of our time so that we all kind of have at least an opportunity to have input and that could be, you know, really productive.
Good idea.
Thanks.
So we are up to public input two. Any comments for public input two?
How about Kim? Get on. Which could bring me to another point. I would also like to know when the Board of Education is going to decide to get back together and do in-person meetings. Because as of Wednesdays, we should be at stage four, which allows 50 people. So I think that this is a great option, but I, I, I don't think it's, for me, I don't, I don't find it. I don't, I don't find it totally transparent for the public.
Well, I, I have something to add to that. They actually came out with additional guidance yesterday, like 10:30 in the evening, saying that they, the governor extended the timeframe under which you could hold meetings remotely. And I'm looking it up right now, but-
Okay, great.
A lot of districts were scrambling because it was announced last night at 11 o'clock or 10:30 to, to go remote with meetings that were supposed to be public this evening. So I will forward you guys that information I planned on doing in my Friday update, but I can send it out tomorrow and you can digest that and decide, you know, how to proceed.
Okay. That order takes it through, through July. So I think we should all review that and get some advice from Tom as to whether we can do that. But I think the sooner we can get back in public, public participation is, is essential.
I'm in agreement as well.
I am too. And I would add that if the recommendation is not to be live going forward, there, we need, I believe that we need to find a way in which the public can be more engaged. Many other boards have it set up where it's similar to the meetings that our administrators have had with parents, where there's a chat box on the side, they could ask questions and input two after they've listened to the meeting or make points then, or they could join the meeting and input one, submit stuff. And we've just kind of, you know, chosen not to give the public that level of access and participation. And I would ask going forward, we reconsider that.
I think that sounds like a great idea. I actually-
I would ask, sorry, Jordana.
No, I was gonna say that I think that, that sounds great. And if we can do that through chat boxes, that sounds great. But I would also add that I do think Zoom actually does provide for even more transparency in some ways than public meetings, simply because we've actually had, perhaps not at this meeting in particular, but in other virtual meetings that we've had, we've had way more attendees and different attendees than, than the norm, just parents, you know, at the dinner table to dial in. So I would say, once we are going back to public meetings, we might want to keep some of these elements so that people can log on live. And, you know, perhaps if they have to, if, once we're back in person, maybe to participate, they need to be there or submit something ahead of time. But I think the ability to be able to call in or watch and login is, is pretty, is even more transparent than we've done in the past.
Yeah.
I agree. Live streaming it going forward makes sense.
Everybody made good points, but I think this process that we've had where people get to submit emails, I think has been a really good one. So, you know, hopefully we'll get back to the point where people can come in person and, and ask questions over Zoom. But I think we ought to think about also keeping the opportunity for people to send in an email. Because that, I think that's been productive.
Yep.
I think that's important, Alex, because I think, you know, we don't know where the pandemic is going to lead in the fall. So I think to completely abandon the online to go back into person, I think some kind of hybrid, just as they're discussing for school, is important to keep participation on both levels. Because even when we are open, I think people may be concerned for health reasons as to, you know, going to those in-person meetings and may feel more comfortable online. But they should have that option. So that's something we can look into.
I agree. But for me, I'd like to be in public.
And it is through, as Brian stated, it's through July. It's actually through August 5th.
Correct.
The executive order.
Anything else that anyone can move forward before we move on to our next item? Is there a motion for item 20.1 convened into executive session?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second. Wait, for what purpose? You have to list a purpose before we vote.
I think it might just be a placeholder there, Brian. I don't know that we actually have any for an executive session.
Ask the Twitter, unless anybody has anything that's-
I, I do. I, I have a personnel, I have a personnel issue. So I, I, I'm okay with going in. I just didn't know if there was something else scheduled.
There is not. So if Sandy has a personnel issue, is that a motion standing?
Yes, it is.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Just before we vote on that, we'll vote on it. Is there a link that we can do that on? Has someone-
I can set it up.
You send the link out to the board for that purpose?
Oh, my.
Thank you. So everyone have to log out and log back into that?
Yes. Okay.
Sandy, do you anticipate we'll have to come back in public for any vote after the exec?
No, I don't believe so. Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Okay, you can open the voting, Victoria, please.
Okay.
Jordana, you're gonna re-forward the new link for the board?
Yes, I am. It's gonna take a little bit, but you should have it within the next few minutes.
All right.
Thank you, Jordana.
No problem. I'm just waiting for Sandy to vote.
Oh, hold on, sorry.
That's okay. You're doing good.
Not bad, right? You did good. All right, thank you. Thank you, Scott Fisher, today, an hour with me.
All right, so now we're leaving this meeting and we'll log in shortly to the exec.
I just want to read the- That is- That is six, six yes and one opposed. Alex Krigsman opposed.